Good morning, all. Welcome. This is March 19th, 2018, Curry County Board of Commissioners meeting. This is, today is actually a continuation of the meeting and responsibilities from quite the marathon we had yesterday. So Commissioner Gold, we should do a flag salute again, do you think?
Sure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for We have in the audience Director of Human Resources Julie Swift and Matt Hall from the Curry County Reporter and Port Sanford News. To my right is Commissioner Sue Gold. We anticipate Council Huddle will be here any moment, and John Jesuit's staff to Commissioner Gold's right. Commissioner Pash, I hear you're feeling a little better each day.
Today, I am feeling a little bit better, yes.
Thank you, good to hear. Just a little side note, let's hear for Dollar General. We have, between them and the Dollar Store, we have three in Curry County. It was racy. Who could open up and help the seniors first? And Dollar General won that race, and they're voting the first hour of their shopping to senior centers. So I thought that was fun and kind of interesting. Quick report. Personally, real pleasure to really get connected with some of the other county officials in a detailed way. Commissioner Pash and Gold, we had, we completed or ended, recessed our meeting yesterday at a little after 5:00. Council Huddle worked very hard, Curry elected officials and several department heads. Speak of the devil, welcome, sir.
Hello.
I got one.
Well, this is the...
Oh, is it the one with better spelling?
Hey, man.
So just a, just a little report here this morning. The President asked through the full support of the House and Senate, invoke the War Powers in Production Act. I think that's the proper term. War Powers and Production Act. And so, that puts it in the coronavirus in somewhat of a war category. And know our sons are not going off to be sacrificed in foreign lands, but we're all foot soldiers, and I appreciate the attendance of everyone that's been so dedicated to responding properly and, yeah, defeat the coronavirus, which is the enemy. In China yesterday, no new COVID-19 cases. That's the first day in the, in this three-month period. Very good news. Sometimes it's hard to, to trust the information that comes out of that country, but South Korea is also doing incredibly well. Our country is following their, their trajectory and their curve. So Commissioner Pash, do you have anything you want to add this morning?
No, it all looked good to me. I read through everything. There was a couple of typos. Sorry, John, to call you on that, but there are a couple of typos. Other than that, it looked fine.
He wrote two pages in 12 minutes.
Well, it is correct. There were typos. Commissioner Pash, I had my assistant Brenda Starbird. So I was a little bit tardy to this meeting. I was in, actually trying to edit the typos, but it looks like, ah. Okay.
Is this your time to speak, Commissioner Gold?
I am. That's the one you just gave me.
Oh, there's another, that's a different, oh, I see it. Good. All right. So there are still some typos on this one. We'll get them fixed, but this is closer. I had my assistant Brenda Starbird scan and email this to you, Commissioner Pash, this morning at your work address. Hopefully, you can get it. This is basically cleaned up. If, if I could, just explain what's going on. So yesterday, we examined a draft rule, and we went through it and decided what we would, we discussed what we would propose as our own rule. And this is my work from my notes from that meeting, and I'd just like to go through it. It differs in organization from what we received. I tried to eliminate some duplications. What we received repeated things over and over, and I tried to reorganize it so we had less repetition. And if you could, we'll just go down it one by one. We're adopting the rules to address the COVID-19 contingencies. They're effective, backdated to February 28, 2020, when the first COVID case was found in Oregon. They'll continue through June 30, 2020, which is the date of our emergency declaration from yesterday. These are intended to supplement our existing personnel rules. The personnel rules remain in effect, but if there's a conflict, these temporary rules will govern. And then the incub, we, this is just a CDC definition of incubation period. And then, so we are, the first rule is to allow expanded remote work options. Employees desiring to work away from their county workspaces, so we call it remote work or working remotely, shall submit a request to the supervisor. The employee shall describe, or the request shall describe, how the employees, and Commissioner Gold pointed out, have a typo right there, and we can fix that, is suitable to remote work. The availability of supplies and equipment, including laptops, cell phones, iPads, tablets, et cetera. And then network adequacy, as informed by the county's IT contractor, CCCIC. And then it says decisions by management and department heads is final. So, I mean, does that jive with what the commissioners recall from our discussion yesterday on that topic?
Yes.
Okay. Then next, workplace safety. This is where, if the CDC during the COVID-19 emergency requires any specific safety equipment for an employee's position, the county will provide such equipment. If the county does not provide the CDC-required equipment, the employee may request to be excused from performing the employee's job functions related to the COVID-19 emergency. So that, is that pretty close to what we talked about yesterday?
Yes.
Okay, good. Next thing, essential staff. If state, federal, or local government imposes a work-from-home or other quarantine order that prohibits travel for other than essential work purposes, county department head shall designate as essential, all employees in that department required to maintain levels of service to meet the demands of the department. Each department shall submit a list of essential employees to the Director of Operations, and the Director of Operations shall ensure that identification is issued to the employees to identify the employee as essential. This identification is intended to allow essential employees to travel to and from work and while on work purposes during times of work-from-home or other quarantine orders. Is that so far so good? I guess I'll just keep going unless anybody stops me.
That's fine.
Next thing is changes in leave rules medically. So this is where I reorganized what they had done. They started with the school closure situation, a medically-required quarantine, a self-quarantine, and then, and then something else. And so I just, and it repeated so much, especially the borrowing language. So I've tried to clean it up. I describe each situation. I go through each situation, and then we just put the borrowing, which is a real key to this one, and we just refer to it. So basically, the medically mandated, here's another typo. Sue Gold, you didn't even catch that one. You're slipping. Oh, Julie Swift has a whole bunch of typos. We will fix all the typos.
I don't need to chime in. I'm not that good at that anyway.
So employees who are medically, and Matt Hall, you're going to wait till you get a non-tipo. Employees who are medically mandated to remain at home, at home, because they have been exposed to the, this was done kind of in haste, and some of it was...
It's amazing how fast you got this done.
Some of it, well, some of this was done last night, so anyway...
Well, I'm just glad we didn't wait until...
Yeah, didn't try to do this yesterday. I agree. That was wise by the board and your suggestion.
It's called age.
They have, well, it's just exhaustion. They have been exposed to the coronavirus, and what I've done here, the last thing identified coronavirus, I wanted to make sure we call it COVID-19, because the coronavirus, as far as I know, is a big, a big thing. And so we want to make sure it's just the COVID-19. So shall be, so again, employees who are medically mandated, they'll be encouraged to work remotely if allowed by their medical professional. So this is the only one where you'll see that particular subcategory of requirement. If allowed by the medical professional, job is suitable to remote work, remote work resources are available, network can accommodate it.
Available, Ms. Bill.
Really? All right. Julie Swift is on it. We'll go through it.
Just keep reading, we won't interrupt you.
Yep. If one or more, and if one or more of the above factors does not allow telework, the employee shall be placed on paid administrative leave. So this is where, if you have a medical doctor's note, you're on paid admin leave. It's not sick time. It doesn't count against any of that. Compromised immune system and vulnerable populations. Employees whose immune systems may be compromised for various medical reasons, or employees who fall into high-risk, vulnerable population, and according to public health officials, need to self-quarantine. And maybe we could say are recommended to self-quarantine? I don't know if the board wants to massage that at all.
I think that ought to be, yeah, I think that's good.
Recommended versus?
Yeah.
Okay.
Need, who's going to determine that?
Good. But is, and I think that we'll, so then, to avoid risk of contracting the COVID, shall be encouraged to work remotely. And then again, same factors. And then we talk about if remote work, if working remotely is not an option, then they may use any of their accrued leave. So this is when you're not medically stationary, you use your accrued leave, use leave without pay. If they choose leave without pay, they won't be penalized. And then they can borrow, leave per Section 5 below. The borrowing terms were the same in, in all those other contexts. They just repeat it. Request donated leave. Donated leave will only be allowed if the employee has exhausted Option 3 above. So borrowing from your own, and this was, I thought that was what we talked about too. So that's the, kind of a pseudo-self-quarantine. And then 3 is the voluntary self-quarantine. Same kind of thing. This is where you're not in a vulnerable population, you're someone else, and you don't have a doctor's requirement, but you still, on your own personal decision, want to self-quarantine. Will still encourage work remotely under the standard factors. If an employee in voluntary self-quarantine declines to work remotely, or working remotely is not an option, then again, same 3, use accrued leave, leave without pay, or borrow. And what we are not doing on this voluntary one is, we're not allowing donation from other people, because this is voluntary and you're not identified as either being sick or, or the other, or, or in a, excuse me, vulnerable population. And then school closures, this was the first one in that last thing. I put it down lower. It's, it still is something without choice by the employee typically, but if the employee remains home because of a school closure, they shall be encouraged, again, same factors. If they are unable to do that, if it's not an option, then they can use, you know, again, all those things. And because this one is more or less not voluntary, we are still going to allow them to request donated leave. And then number 5, again, borrowing, advanced leave. Where authorized, an employee may borrow up to five months' worth of future leave, either vacation, sick, or a combination not to exceed a total of 80. The leave shall be paid back at a rate of 50% per month for each bank until fully paid back. Payback of this leave shall begin the month after they return. Employees unapproved of lafimla may delay repayment. And this is pretty much right out of that thing, and I think we're all on line there. And then the last one, or the last two, employer notification of exposure to risk, medical referral, return-to-work options. And then if county management has knowledge that an employee may have been exposed to COVID-19, then the employee's department head shall notify the employee within one day. Once the county has notified the employee, the employee shall be required to notify a medical professional for testing. The employee shall report back to the county. If they fall into the categories in Section D above, you know, medically mandated, compromised, voluntary, school closure, et cetera, and then proceed accordingly. And then workplace closure, this is kind of the big one. In the event that the county closes its workplace operations, employees will be placed on administrative paid leave for up to two weeks. And Julie Swift, I wasn't sure exactly what our hazardous conditions rule was, but it says thereafter, our personnel rules on hazardous conditions will apply. So, all right, good. So that's, that seemed, I felt like that, you know, after yesterday's discussions and stuff, I felt like that summarized the, the board's will. And so if that's the case, we have prepared an order for the board to consider to adopt, and just entertain a motion and further discussion.
Did you have something you wanted to add, please?
Yeah, just one thing. This is Julie Swift, Peril and HR.
You want to say who you are, please?
I just did.
I'm sorry.
So John, on D1, the second little paragraph, is you have one or more of the factors does not allow telework?
Oh, did we leave, did I miss the one? Thank you, yes. I, I'm not interested in using that phrase. So, thank you. Does not a remote work or remote working, working remotely? Sure. Thank you. I thought you were going to work with me on the typos after.
Well, that's not a typo. That's a code word.
All right. Oh, I, I see. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Very good. Jim Cohen and Renee Cohen are here as well. They may have...
Joined us in the audience. Thank you for getting here this morning. Much appreciated, so...
Yeah, have you had a chance? I tried to get this draft to you both. Did you have a chance to look at it?
No, I'm sorry. I have not.
Okay.
But I do, but I would like to just make a comment if you're done with this topic.
Well, we're still, we haven't done a motion or anything, okay.
We're going to be calling, certainly calling on you.
So I move that we approve the temporary personnel rules for COVID-19 with the corrections on the spelling before we actually sign it.
And the one addition?
Well, that's already there, so...
Okay. Well, I'll second that with discussion, if we can. There was, just a little side note here, that there was some conversation yesterday that we might put this into a permanent addition to our, to our personnel rules down the road. So I'm not asking for that today, but I just want to kind of let the public know and the other officials here, that elected officials, that this might be something, if I understood correctly from yesterday, that we want to add. Was that your understanding, Commissioner Pash?
I'm sorry, I couldn't quite hear you on that. Somebody wants to add this into the personnel?
Well, eventually, this could easily become part of the permanent amendments to our personnel rules. I just wondered if you heard what I heard yesterday, that that was a possible discussion and consideration?
I did, I did not hear that.
I did not hear that either.
Okay. What, what we did discuss, Commissioner Boyce, was that this is in our personnel rules, this, and then that the board would, would have us submit this to the different unions to see if they wanted to include it as a temporary emergency letter of agreement for the different union agreements.
Okay, there was a tremendous amount of work went into this, and I want to take advantage of that, if it can be beneficial to our whole program down the road.
All right. Thank you. So, go ahead.
I could see this being added into an emergency plan for the county, like we are hopefully going to be working on this year, on something like this, if we have an emergency in the county, that this would automatically be enacted for that, for any emergency that the county enjoys.
That makes sense.
And that might even be a better approach. But you're hearing what I'm hearing, that we, I think, we're in agreement. A lot of work went into this, so we need to not have to go down this road again a year from now, 10 years from now, if this can be timely and, and stay, stay with benefit to the whole personnel rule system. So, roll call, please. Oops, excuse me.
I need to amend my motion, just a tad. This applies to the SEIE. You, union, and all...
Nope. This, this is a...
Oh, we're negotiating with the various unions?
This is an amendment to...
Plus all of the non-represented employees?
This is an amendment to our non-represented personnel rules, and our personnel rules, by way of reminder, apply to our unions when there's no conflict with the CBAs. But what we will be doing with these is to see if the unions want to, sometimes there may be a, a provision of a CBA that's different than this, and so we're going to submit this, we're going to tell the unions, hey, unions, we just adopted this for our general personnel rules. Please see if you want to, you know, make an emergency adoption to your CBAs. And that would require a separate action by each one of those unions, if they want to, or if they say that's good enough for us in the regular rules. We'll wait to hear from them.
Okay, so do I need to amend my motion to just say this is going to go in the general?
No, because the order says that here.
Okay, good enough.
So the original motion stands as you communicated.
Right.
I seconded. Roll call, please.
Mr. Gold?
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce?
Yes.
Chair Pash?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
Next on the agenda, Commissioner updates. Commissioner Gold, you get to go first.
Okay, I've got several things that need to be discussed. The first thing, we talked yesterday about a possible hiring of two part-time janitors/ sanitizers to take care of the campus, because one of our employees is out sick. And so I would like to have the commissioners okay on that. I don't think I have the right to say, hey, Julie, go and hire those people. So...
So essentially, I think this would go the other way, that you would get a proposed hire order to hire two people under the emergency rules that we just adopted. Have, I mean, has, it sounds like you've been in contact with somebody here at the county who knows who you're talking about. That person should submit an order to the board to approve a hire order under our emergency rule, where we just suspended the requirement to advertise for people.
Right, and part of the problem is, we need to do this yesterday.
Okay.
Not today.
There is an urgency here.
Yes, there is.
Or an emergency, so how do, go ahead. HR Swift, please.
So Julie Swift, Peril and HR, I do have an ad prepared that I'm going to put onto the website.
Okay.
So it'll, I'm ready to go with that, and then if there's people that are...
We adopted a rule, in our emergency declaration, we waived the requirement to advertise for openings, and we can just directly hire people.
That's how I understood it as well.
So are there people out there that are aware, that are ready to be hired?
That's, that's, I, that's what I'm trying to get from Commissioner Gold. Who have you talked to who thinks they have people they know?
Actually, Summer said she has Facebook contacts that she could look out to. You may have contacts out there. I mentioned it at my fire department meeting last night, because I suspect there's a lot of people out there that are unemployed.
Well, we still need them to, all we have done is suspend the requirement that we advertise before hiring. They'll still need to fill out an application.
Right, right.
And they'll still need to do a, you know, background screening.
Right.
But those can both be done very quickly, so what I would recommend, Commissioner Gold, is you tell whoever you think needs to know that, have them get in here and fill out an application.
Okay.
But Commissioner Gold is trying to get board approval here too, today.
Well, she, do you have any persons, or are you just saying Summer knows people?
Well, what I'm saying is, I want your approval to actually go out and hire two people immediately.
Through our department?
Yes.
Okay.
Going through the proper channels with an application and a background check.
So typically, thank you, typically, the, the board adopts the hire orders. Are you saying you want to delegate the hiring authority to somebody else? Or do you want us to bring back, usually, you know, we have an order and it says we're going to hire?
Right, right.
This person at this rate? And you guys see those, and you say, yeah. Are you telling us during this emergency, you just want staff to go do this without bringing them to the board? Or are you just saying?
Well, they could bring it to the board. My understanding is, we may be having several meetings.
And that's a good point.
I just, we need to do it yesterday.
So...
Yeah, Chet's overloaded.
Okay, and I'm going to ask you to consider on, make an emotion, and I assume we can do that today without the public notice and not being on our agenda?
Correct. We can add this topic to the agenda, the, it's fine.
Thank you. And I'm going to encourage you to make your motion to have HR Director Swift take care of that. Is that okay?
That's fine. I move that we...
Well, you had something, Councilman?
Well, I just wanted to know, my, my understanding is, these people would work in Chet's department for the most part.
Exactly.
So I think what you could do is, you could make a motion to delegate to HR Director Swift, and is, is Mr. Brewer still interim?
He is.
So I would just say you delegate to interim, interim building facilities maintenance Director Brewer and HR Director Swift, the ability to hire, and are these people going to be temporary?
Temporary, yeah, temporary.
And is it, but are they full-time temporary?
No, part-time.
Okay, so to hire up, no more than two part-time temporary workers during the COVID situation?
And then bring the higher orders to you retroactively?
Yes.
I think that's fine.
Very good. I think we understand that. I think staff can understand that, if you just say so moved and...
Okay, I move that we do as Council Huddle suggested.
Perfect. Is there a second? Commissioner Pash?
I'll second.
Okay. So discussion, when we, I think it might be wise not to define what part-time is, just because it is on a day-to-day basis. We know it's not full-time. Would you agree with that?
I would agree with that.
Okay.
Hours to be, and days to be determined by facilities.
And it's important that we say temporary, because we still have our employees that are out sick, so...
And one more point of discussion. Do we want to look at other employees that may be part-time, or would that be automatic?
Julie Swift? I think that's automatic, but I don't think we have any, or...
No.
What, we don't have any?
We have, like, one part-time person.
Yeah.
And we have, we have the people at the fairgrounds.
Yeah. Anyway, there's...
So we can contact them?
Yeah.
And, good. And I want, one more point of discussion. We're having a few employees that are volunteering their time and doing the same, same work and effort. So we don't want that to go unnoticed. We'll bring it up at another time and send gratitude. So any more discussion?
Yeah, I've got several.
Wait, we've got to vote on this?
Oh, we need to vote.
Yeah. Roll call, please. Moved and seconded.
Commissioner Gold?
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce?
Yes.
Chair Pash?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
Okay, I've got a couple of other things here that I need to discuss, and I, I just want you to know where I'm coming from. Jeremy said that we had a website where everybody could go to to get the most updated information, and I think what we need to do is add to that website, what are the resources available for elderly shut-ins? I am going to be having a meeting down at South County on some of these very issues tomorrow. They need shopping, they need meals, they need medical appointments. I've been in contact with the senior center down there. They've put out over 500 meals. The food bank has been putting out snack packs. I emailed her today to get maybe an update of what's happening, and she's in contact with all the food banks in the county, so I will give you an update there. What are the resources for children? I think that needs to be on our website also. Meals, daycare, who can they call? And possibly even having a county number that people can call if they're in need of these resources. I think I said something about shopping angels. This is kind of a national trend right now that people are doing. Some of the younger people are getting out and shopping for older people, and in these times, I just think that we need to pull together, not only as a county, but as a nation. So I can get more information on that, that this thing has just been coming so fast that I don't have all, everything together yet. Also, several people have reported that they're having allergic reactions from the spraying in the halls, and would prefer that the seats and the counters and stuff be wiped down rather than sprayed. And I know Chet's in overload as far as not having the time to do all this, so we need to have some remedies. And I'm proposing that maybe the department takes...
Commissioner Gold, forgive me for interrupting. Commissioner Pash, remember back in November, I was on the phone, you had to remind me to mute my phone? We're getting some background noise, sir.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Sorry.
Okay, so I don't believe in just saying, hey, do this. I think we have to have some remedies to this. So I think each department could take care of wiping down their surfaces. I already talked to Beth Barker-Hidalgo over in the COVID building, Colvin Building, and she is taking care of that because we didn't have the janitorial services to do that. We've got the veterans building down in South County that one of our employees took care of. He's not available, so I've got to call into them, and unfortunately, Tony's off, so it's hard to get in touch with them, but hopefully they'll be able to do something of the same. Once we get some part-time people here, we can have things calm down. I did talk to our Cherie Ward about some of this, the spraying especially, and she says she didn't think it was a real good idea to have that going on. She thought wiping the surfaces down was a better thing. Also, I went to a fire meeting last night after all the other meetings yesterday, and some interesting things came to light. It was reported that there's been some price gouging here in the county. I'll give you a specific, and I'm not going to name names, but they were charging $68 for a small box of toilet paper instead of $14, so, not good. Also, I heard that some of the merchandise in our largest department store here in the county, they were changing all of the items all around, so there were no prices listed underneath so people could actually check on those things. Now, I don't know whether that's on purpose or not, but again, I think we need to all be pulling together. I was able to solve a problem for a little lady who was going to have her electric turned off. Brent Bischoff was wonderful in working with this gal. So these are some of the things we have to do to work together. I will be talking to our emergency manager possibly about getting some of these things on the website, especially after I get together with the South County people tomorrow. So that's it. I think I've, oh, one other thing. I have been organizing this volunteer thing where all these volunteer groups were supposed to come and report on their volunteers, what their groups do, how many hours they put in, and that sort of thing. I've got approximately over 30 groups that are going to be coming. Obviously, we can't have them here in the room. So my proposal is that I get them to do a tiny video, about three minutes, and we show it. Now, I'm going to have to say to them, I don't know whether we're going to have to ti, have the time to show these videos, but I want the volunteers to know how important they are in this county. We could not run without our volunteers. So with your permission, does that sound like a good idea?
I think it's a wonderful idea myself. Commissioner Pash?
Well, I agree.
Okay, so I'm not sure whether we're going to have time for 15 presentations during one of our meetings, but I will let them know that we're not going to forget about it. We'll do the presentations, but maybe not at the same meetings.
But you were going to schedule routinely, I think, originally, weren't you?
I was going to schedule for two meetings, April 1st and April 15th, and my guess is that's not going to happen as it was planned. So let's just say there's, the only thing that's permanent in this life has changed, so get over it. Okay, that's it. I've got it.
So we just had Public Health Administrator Ward join us. Did you need to offer something to the public? You got to fix that microphone, please.
I just want to make clarification in regards to the disinfectant. I'm not saying not to disinfect. I am saying that we can maybe cut down on it a little bit, maybe department heads or somebody, because I even noticed it was pretty heavy in my office yesterday, and some people may be allergic to that type of disinfectant. So I'm just saying, we just use more caution when we're disinfecting, maybe not as heavy as it's been, just to kind of recognize that, because that's just a really big, huge concern.
If I may, it's interesting because, I didn't say anything, but man, yeah, a couple times it's been very strong, and I thought, okay, this is just part of the territory. We'll, we'll...
Yeah, I mean, we, we still want to disinfect.
Yes.
I just don't think it needs to be as heavy as it's been. I just, I do know, I want to be very conscientious of how people are reacting also to the disinfectant.
Great. Commissioner Gold?
So do you agree wiping surfaces or surfaces down is probably a better approach than spraying?
Well, here's the thing, I, you know, I'm not a, I'm not a doctor and I can't really make that advice. I mean, that'd be a good question for a health officer, so I could run that by a health officer in regards to that one.
Okay, that would be good.
Let's, let's do this. What you just said, toning it down a little bit, might be the only combination we need in addition to, yes, the, the hand wiping that's going on.
The hand wiping is, is your best.
I think they've been really thorough.
I mean, your hand wiping is really a, a good thing to do, I mean, but the constant going around and spraying while people are there and stuff, I know that can really be heavy contact with that disinfectant, so we just want to be a little more cautious on that.
Fair enough. Do you have anything additional?
Nope, that was it.
What time did you get here this morning?
I did, I can't recall. I can't recall and hit the boots on the ground already, so, but I did want to at least kind of clarify that a little bit.
Would you stay here for just a minute? Commissioner Pash, you're next.
Uh, well, I just want also comment on Ms. Ward's comments during my time in the military. Guess what they taught us? A bottle of bleach and some hot water, and it lasts for a long time on surfaces, and it kills 99.9% of everything, so a good, a good washing with some bleached-out water is as good as a lot of these disinfectants. That's my opinion. As far as personal comments because of my health situation, I really haven't prepared much. I've actually been doing a lot of R and R in my vet, and, so I really don't have a lot on that. I will say, I think next week I will do a, if we have a meeting next week, I will do a presentation on what happened at NACO. There were some great things that did happen at NACO, and since I've been back, I've been in contact with some people in Washington, and I may have some really, really good news on the road trip. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Pash. Administrator Ward, I'll, maybe to fill in a couple blanks here, the, the last time I heard the governor at a phone conference, I was taking notes like crazy, but I just want to give a little shout out to the state and the, it's called Corona Emergency Coordinating Center, and she basically put three people in charge of all the data going through this group, and I wrote so fast, I may not have the names. I'm familiar with two of them. One of them is Andrew Phelps, the emergency management coordinator, so he is one of the three. These three people have tremendous credentials, and the reason I want to highlight this is because, yeah, now we've lost three people in Oregon, and to have all the data go through them, the other one, I think is going to be very beneficial. You might know Harrington, that was, he's been in the governor's office for some time, but his background is also in emergency management. He was very tuned into the H1N1 eight or nine years ago. And the third one is Baden. I didn't get first names, but he's with the Oregon State Health Authority. So those three are collecting data every day, running a very unified office. I just think that the governor's decision to do this was really timely and prudent, and from a small county, I just really am grateful. So did you want to add anything to that, or is there anything updated? It's fairly new.
Uh, no, nothing further at this time. I'm, I'm working with the state right now in regards to...
You are familiar with this coordinating center?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Yes, I am.
So the only thing on Commissioner reports that I have, if, Eric, if you could come to the main screen, I just want to remind the public, the 15 days, now we're in day four, it's amazing how much changes in any given day nationwide and certainly in our state. I did highlight yesterday that despite we've lost over 100 to the disease in the country, 77,000 as of yesterday this time, maybe a little bit later, had recovered. So that's just a stat that, it brings us good news. You did hear me mention South Korea, that they're on their way of leveling out in terms of the daily diagnosis and additional cases. But I just want to read this, listen to and follow the directions of your state and local authorities. So if, if any of our seniors in particular are listening out there, we have encouraged you to stay home. Commissioner Gold mentioned the Sharing Angels. There's another...
Shopping Angel.
Is it Shopping Angels?
Right.
Yeah, and then another one is invisiblehands.com, and they're, they're available nationwide and helping folks get supplies. And so with our average age being 56 or median age, if, if people are watching and need help, they can contact our office. And this is where it's already changed. If you feel sick, stay home. We're asking everybody to stay home unless they absolutely need to go out if they have questions, you know, back to, take your own temperature, that's one of the first signs that can possibly give you some good information on, on your health. And so you can, I don't need to read the rest of them, but just stay tuned and, as I said, we're in day four, and then it goes to do our part to slow down the spread, slow down the spread. We want to get our curve leveled out in the country, especially in Oregon, and we're watching very closely what happens here in Curry County. I mentioned the president in my opening little comment there. To see the federal government come together, the president declaring the, the War Act so that he has, the other side, the aisle encourage him to absolutely take that authority. And so there's just a real level of teamwork at the national level. You see it at the state level, and it's just, it's really refreshing, and I think you're seeing it here. We're having our two o'clock meeting today. If anybody is hearing me and has not had a, had a notice of this meeting, you are welcome to join us. Assessor Cohen is going to co-chair with me, and we're just going to talk a little bit about what we did yesterday. The departments are wondering what points did they shut their doors and work strictly without the public exposure, and I just need all the information. I think we need all the information and input and insight that we can get our hands on, and there's some people who've been here a long time, and I think that's going to be really beneficial to our citizens. And I think it shows that Curry County is not lagging behind on our responsibility here. All of our elected officials are working on other counties and learning everything they possibly can. Come on up, Clerk Cohen, if you would, please. Thanks, Cherie.
Renee Cohen, County Clerk, thank you for letting me add a comment. I want to tag on to what Commissioner Boyce is saying, and working with my colleagues, county clerks throughout the state, there have been some office shutdowns, there have been limited access to the counter, and I would hope that I can get, respectfully asked from the commissioners, if we can maybe have what like Tillamook County is doing, the commissioners are meeting with their leadership team every morning just to give a quick update on where we're at. So if there's any way you all can figure out a way to make that work, I know everyone is extremely busy and time is running out for, for a lot of us to get what we need to get done, but if there's any way we can maybe do such a, a conference call first thing in the morning, just giving us a current update on where we're at, and if there's shutdowns that need to have happen, or just kind of help us with what departments should be doing at this point. Many counties, like I said, are, I think Lake County Commissioners completely shut down the courthouse for a week, and that just happened recently. So I would love to have that kind of dialogue and update so that I can also communicate to our citizens what's going on with our office.
Are you, do I hear you saying you would prefer an early morning meeting?
I would, I would.
You know, in my lodge, I used to have a staff meeting at seven o'clock, and it was so productive to hear from everybody and get their...
Or just first thing in the morning, just dial up and for five minutes, just get an update from, from our leadership team. They're, like I said, our colleagues, the clerks around the state are having type of, this type of communication with their leadership team.
So can you make that recommendation later today?
Yeah, sure.
Commissioner Pash, is morning good for you? And are we talking eight o'clock? Is that...
No, I think, right, first thing in the morning, whatever your shift starts.
Okay.
I don't think you need to come in early.
What would be most convenient for your, for your department, for example, for you?
Yeah, first thing in the morning before 10 o'clock.
Before 10 o'clock. Commissioner Pash, did you hear that okay?
I heard that, yeah. So you're wanting to have a phone conversation with everyone every morning?
Yeah, we're not saying that yet, I don't think.
Right, just, just think about, you know, if there's a way that we can communicate with the leadership team, just do a phone call in the morning, just updating us on where we're at.
Great. Commissioner Gold?
Um, I'm, I'm fine with that, but we've got to make sure that we get out the facts, whatever they are.
Okay. So, and as it relates here to commissioners' meetings, at some point, we might be meeting by phone. I'm not making that recommendation yet, but I, I'd like to have the commissioners, the board, think about how that might be structured and if it's a good decision at some point, even if it's perhaps necessary. I, I don't think we need to worry a lot about it today, but, you know, we're going to know a lot more Monday morning and what has, what comes down the path over the weekend. So Commissioner Gold?
I think what we have to have at this point is some way to do that, make sure that we have that path to do it, and also with the department heads, some way to set up some sort of a phone conference, whether you're at home or whether you're here in your office or whatever. So not necessarily everybody has to be in this room. So that's what I'm thinking.
Clerk Cohen, do you have something you wanted to add to that?
Just one of my emails that I received from Jackson County, it states that they are canceling all their BOC meetings and doing things through the phone. So I don't know
Oh.
What, what the processes are, what legally, that's a county council does not, I think, input on what you can and can't do, but...
Could you give us just a little more detail on that, or maybe we don't need any more detail?
No, I, I'm just seeing that for Jackson County, all in-person meetings are canceled, including BOC meetings, as of today.
So the thing is, we've got to have the technology in place to, to do that.
Communicate. We're going to, we're still going to have you, did you say they are doing by phone? I'll...
And again, this is just an email I'm reading, so I think you should reach out to Jackson County and find out exactly what's going on.
That's a terrific heads up, thank you.
So to be prepared, I'm big into that. Maybe we need to talk to Phil and say, what is the process we need to go through in order to be ready for this?
Yeah, because that's, there's another good example, if somebody else wanted to call in right now, we do, we do have a system that's free that we can do.
One person can just call in right now.
Yeah, so maybe we can, your idea of talking to Phil, we might...
Do you want me to do that? I will do that.
You're talking about go-to-meeting, Commissioner Boyce, one of those kind of things?
Right, right.
Yeah. And, and Commissioner Pash, do you have anything you want to add to that? Any part of that discussion?
Well, I just know that there are, there are websites that you can type into, like to do the conference call thing. You get that number, and you all call into it, and you can have a, you know, a commissioner meeting through that kind of a number.
Yeah, it's not that complicated.
No.
And it is available, and yeah, go-to-meeting might be a good option.
Well, you have one today scheduled, am I correct?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a real simple program.
Yeah, so you can do that with your commissioner meetings the same way.
And we'd be having you call in on that so we could have multiple call-ins. Assessor Cohen?
If you, Jim Cohen, Curry County Assessor, if you do get to the point to where you're going to be conducting BOC meetings by phone, it seems like it would be a good idea to have at least one of you here so it can be filmed and still be online for the, for the people to hear, you know...
At least the chair.
The things that you're wrestling with and, and, and your decision-making processes. I really like to thank County Clerk Renee Cohen for, for bringing in some of this information from, from other counties. It, especially the part about where there are other counties, where their county commissioners are meeting with their management teams, you know, maybe as much as daily. We may decide we don't need something as much as daily, but it certainly, I, I know I could use more information from some of the experts, from our, our healthcare professionals and our emergency manager, because it's hard to keep up with everything that's going on just by watching the news or reading the newspaper.
You don't know what's true and what's not.
Things are happening so quickly. So I appreciate your consideration of that concept. We'll, we'll get that kicked off this afternoon. Maybe we'll have the opportunity to, to discuss, you know, how often managers feel like they, they would like to meet. One of the things I'd like to see is discussed this afternoon is, I, I would like to have somebody from IT there at that meeting so we can discuss working remotely and, and so other department heads know how to set that up. But one final thing that just occurred to me in listening to some of the things you have going on this morning, so many times in county government, in, in order to get something done, you need the three commissioners to agree to it. And as quickly as things are moving, I'm wondering if the commissioners might consider selecting a point person in case there's some things that need to get done right away that could go, one commissioner could give approval on until you have your next commissioner's meeting to discuss it. It, it might help expedite emergency actions if there are any that we need to take.
Council Huddle, sweet...
I'm in.
Hang, hang on, Commissioner, one second. Council Huddle didn't, wouldn't that be covered in our emergency declaration from yesterday?
It was, it was, it was not, actually. We did not delegate to any individual commissioner ability to make any particular decision without the other two commissioners. That would be a separate act we'd need to do. What the board did do was delegate to the emergency management coordinator, the local public health official, and the sheriff, as well as the director of operations, to make decisions on these emergencies within their purview, but it did not delegate to any individual board member any authority to make decisions and do directions.
But we still have liaison responsibilities, that has not changed.[1776.66]
Liaison responsibilities still exist. I don't think those are decision-making responsibilities, though. I think what I heard Director Cole, or excuse me, Assessor Cullen ask, is that because of the issues with meetings, timing, scheduling, you know, there would be, it might make it easier if individual commissioners were delegated authority to actually make decisions, give direction, that kind of thing. Commissioner Pash?
I personally would not vote for that. I think it's, it's in the best interest of, of our constituents that we remain intact as a board, as it was set up through this county, and that's just my personal thought.
Excuse me. Yes?
Um, I think I'm going to agree with Commissioner Pash, simply because we are all available by phone. And if we don't happen to be in the same room, I still think that we could make a decision by phone. So that's my-
Technically, you could even make a decision by email.
Or email.
That would have to go through, excuse, go ahead, Commissioner Pash.
And the other thing is, I mean, if, if that were to change, where one of us became incapacitated, hospitalized, those kind of things, then yes, we could look at it at that time and make sure that everything is set up legally, you know, through Council Huddle and his advice, just to make sure that we're following the letter of the law on that. But at this time, I think, because we're all available and we're all of sound mind, I'd like to leave it at that. Again, that's just my personal thought.
Council Huddle, so if we're going to go in a joint email decision, that has to go through who?
Director of Operations, I presume. When you say it has to go through Director of Operations, what, what do you-
We can't email one another.
Right, so what you would, what I would think is, here's how I would see the scenario happen. An issue is brought to the attention of any one of you individually, or it could be brought to another elected official or a department head. Then the question would be, this looks like we need board decision. How do we make that happen? I think the protocol would be to have John Jesuit, you know, direct, he, you know, and, and yes, if the Director of Operations was here, we would, she would be the, the central point to organize the email meeting or what have you. But I think essentially it would be, you know, here, commissioners, this is a decision for you to make by email, by these votes. I, I do, I do think that we could run into some public meeting and records issues there. I know we're in an emergency. The key with that is, we can always ratify. So we could make these decisions by email or by phone and act on them, and then instead of having a meeting every time we need to do this, we could come back at a regular meeting and go through the decisions that were made by these interim measures and ratify them and say, we ratify, ratify. So we could, we could make our meeting schedule more regular, once or twice a week, and then we could do these interim telephone call votes or email votes, and, and then ratify those. That, that would be, I think, a really good way to do it, where we have flexibility, but we can still show that we're following the rules and the laws on public information. Commissioner Gold?
I agree with that. I think we need to be flexible and to Commissioner Pash's concern, if we become incapacitated, still, if two are capacitated, then, then that'll take care of it.
If there's agreement. Well, anything else? I just want the public to know, I'll be here every day. I don't think I have any choice but to, I, I think my authority as one commissioner, I'm not here to make arbitrary decisions. To the contrary, but I am here to learn and provide and adjust and encourage support. That's what I see the county commissioner's job. And so I just want the public to know, yes, I will be here every day. And I, yeah. Anything else?
Nope.
Commissioner Pash?
I think that's all for me, sir.
Thank you.
Have a, have a question.
Yes, sir.
I've heard, I, I was working on that other project, and so I missed some of the beginning of this meeting. I heard from some people that we'll have a meeting this afternoon. Is that going to be a board meeting this afternoon, or what is happening this afternoon?
We are collecting, being available to all the department heads and other elected officials, having a meeting similar to what we had yesterday afternoon with the various individuals. And for example, downstairs is shut down today. The employees are there, but the doors are locked. And we've had some other departments say, hey, what, what should I be doing? What's the general consensus here? We're trying to include as many people as we can, and certainly subject to some of the emails and what we're learning from other counties, and just preparing.
So is that going to be here, in this room?
So is that going to be a board of commissioners' meeting?
No.
Who's, who's "we"?
I'd be, co-chairing-
We can.
I'm co-chairing-
We can all attend that meeting, though.
You can call in. There are no decisions that are going to be made, and your input would be invaluable, in my opinion.
So it'll be a public meeting? Anytime there's, anytime there's a, two commissioners deliberating, talking about county business, that's a public meeting, whether it's a workshop, whether you're making a decision or not. So we should put out some kind of notice about this. What, what time will it be?
2 o'clock. It's a phone conference.
Thank you. 2 o'clock phone conference in this room.
So then if the other commissioners can't be there, then I'll make a report back to them, or Assessor Cullen can.
Sure. Who's invited on the phone conference?
Basically, anybody that wants to be there, but primarily. Do you want to give a comment, Assessor Cullen? Anybody that's a department head or elected official?
So I-
Huh?
Yeah, Jim Cullen, County Assessor. I, I sent out an email to all elected officials and department heads. I presume all of you got it.
I haven't had a chance to read all my emails today.
Last night at 6 o'clock.
Yeah. Inviting everybody to come to, what I had envisioned was one of our management-type meetings, but really, you know, ideally, we would set up something to where all three of the commissioners could attend. And, and so if, if we can allow for that, if it has to be a public meeting where somebody who wants to listen in, and the newspaper wants to listen in, that they could call in and, and listen to the deliberation, I don't have an issue with that.
So is that possible, to send out a notice of the meeting?
Yes.
Okay, so I think that's probably what we need to do, send out a notice of the meeting, so that all three commissioners can be involved. I think you probably need input, and, and all commissioners need to hear what's said.
And the public.
And the public.
Bureaucracy prevails again, so we may not be able to do it today.
Why not?
You're saying we can?
Let's just send out a notice of the meeting.
Pardon me?
Let's just send out a notice of the meeting, if, if we can do that. I, I don't have an issue with that.
Well, my preference would be to have all three commissioners have an opportunity to contribute and listen in.
Well, that's why he's going to send out a notice of an emergency meeting.
We're going to use the term "emergency," Council?
Of course, yeah.
Okay.
And then do one thing-
Under the law, don't we have to use the word "emergency"?
We will, we will use the word "emergency." It's the best word to use in these circumstances. And then we will also explain during the meeting why we could not provide the minimum of 24 hours' notice because of the emergency conditions. So that's, that's how we do it.
Does that put a spin on, not a spin, but a concern that something new has happened that has created this to, of course, between now and 2 o'clock, that could happen.
Well, something new has happened. I mean, we have the War Powers Act. We have new information from both EEOC, as well as there's been changes to FEMLA at the state level. So there is new information.
Let's, let's take a pause for just a moment. In our audience is Juvenile Director Lang. Did you have something you wanted to offer today, this morning? Welcome. Assessor Cullen, you can come right back in just a moment.
No, I, on the top floor over there, trying to take care of all the court and legal stuff. And I know I was talking with Stacy at the DA's office, and, yeah, we're really not sure what we have the right to do, what we don't, how to protect our employees. We're not sure what directions everybody else has taken, and want to really make sure we're on the same, same level, that we have authority to do what we're looking to do, and we, and we're not sure what to do.
What are you looking to do?
Well, I mean, we're not sure as far as employee-wise. I mean, do I have the ability to, you know, ask somebody not to be at work if there are conditions that we're concerned of? Do I have the right to lock our door to the public and, you know, be on the phone? You know, what services are we able to offer or not offer?
Good points.
So Director Lang, were you, were you planning on calling in this afternoon?
Absolutely. Yeah, and I know Mr. Spanzal is out today, but he is having Stacy. She plans on being in my office, and we'll both be on the phone at the meeting.
And I think Assessor Cullen's, in my vision, was just to take notes as fast as we could write down and just interact with, with, you know, there's, there's over 100 years of experience here with some of our elected people, and a lot of experience in Curry County. And so I didn't intend to do a lot of talking, but a lot of writing. And then I wanted to report back to the commissioners and see where that took us for future get-togethers. And yes, give those people a chance just to, to express, even vent a little bit, and say, hey, this is the issue I'm dealing with. What would you do if you're in my position? How can you help? How can we all help combine efforts and absolutely team up? I think it's imperative.
Exactly. And we have our employees all looking at us, you know, when we walk in the door in the morning, they're all looking at us like, what, what's the plan? You know, what, what's coming down? You know, all they're getting right now is kind of social media stuff that some might be factual-
Oh, boy.
...and some might be not. So I, I find that it's, you know, our responsibility to get accurate information and pass it on to them on what we're doing to, you know, keep them safe and, and what can we offer.
So we just adopted, we just adopted the rules on leave.
Fantastic.
So if any employees feel they want to self-quarantine, you know, they can, they'd be encouraged to work at home. And if the rule says that if they, if they can't do work remotely through either a tablet or something, and then they have to use actual leave. So if they have a medical symptomatic, or, you know, the whole, we just adopted the whole thing we talked about. That's a, I think that's a good place to start. But then, and then when you ask if you can close your doors and make appointments only, certainly you have the ability to, you know, say, public meetings by appointment only. We're still keeping social distances and those kind of things. I don't, I don't think there's, you know, the, the board has not ordered a shutdown of the county, if that's a question. So really, I-
So you think this meeting is, wouldn't potentially be productive?
No, I think the meeting would be productive, but, you know, I'm, I'm just trying to give Director Lang some feedback now. I mean, if I'm not mistaken, the assessor has already made the decision that you're asking, whether he can close his, you know, building to the public, and he's done so, and set appointment only and those kind of things. So I think that question's already answered, you know, as far as your ability to do that.
Well, we have, do we have a motion, or do we need to just go ahead with a public notice?
I think we got direction from the board that JJ will put out the notice to the usual sources and say we're having a meeting at 2 o'clock here.
And we'll offer the, the call-in information.
Sure.
To be, to be included with that. Economic Director Madison, do you have something? Clerk Cullen, something else?
I see a question on Matt's face here.
Oh, Matt Hall, the-
Matt Hall.
Press.
Oh, excuse me.
You might have to ask up there, that the, you might have to get on the microphone so we can hear.
Great. Now's it. You want to do it now? You can, sure.
Matt Hall, Curry County Reporter, Middle Point Herald and Port Oxford News. In the midst of all of our troubles and, and all of the great work that is being done, I would like to suggest that Curry County might also have an opportunity here. There are many places which have it much worse than us. There are going to be people and industries out there that will be reevaluating and looking at a place they might go that has clean air, opportunity, and safety. There might be an effort to start reaching out and identifying those people and industries now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think Economic Development Director Madison took notes, and she's probably already on that a little bit. Assessor Cullen, and then Penny Hudgens?
Yeah, I was just going to say, with regards to however often we may have a management-type meeting, we might look to other counties that are already doing this daily and, and seeing what processes they're, they're following for doing their public notices and, and whatnot. So maybe you could have your staff check that out for us.
Will do. Ms. Hudgens, did you have something?
Morning. Penny Hudgens, Building and Planning. I just wanted to let everybody know, and I'm not sure if Becky Crockett came back by yesterday, and let you guys know, but we have, due to the enormous amount of walk-in traffic that we get, we have closed our doors to that traffic, and we're only allowing contact via phone, email, or other methods rather than having people come in. If somebody wants to drop off some plans, we have set aside a bucket that they can put them in, and then we can disinfect them for a couple of days before we even touch them. So-
I think-
Ms. Hudgens?
Yes.
Go ahead, Commissioner Pash.
I just wanted to make sure, I'm sure you've done it, but I just wanted to make sure that you put notices on, on the doors that are closed that you are open for business, and, and this is how to proceed?
Yes, we've done that, and I've also put that information on our web pages.
Thank you so much. I knew you did. I just wanted to make sure.
Okay.
And I think Director Crock was planning to call in today.
I know she's going to be here a little bit later. I'm not exactly sure what her plans are. I think she was supposed to be here about 1 o'clock today.
Terrific.
So what might make sense at this meeting would be to, and I saw one from, I think, Tillamook County, where there was a press release issued that said, here's the changes we've made. We're, as Commissioner Pash said, we're posting on doors, but if we put out a press release saying, you know, Curry County is still open for business on a modified basis, you know, in-person contact is, you know, limited, but you can still make appointments, you can still drop things off, and, you know, the, the doors are still open, something like that. But, and, and then have each department say what they're doing, and then just put that out there. But that, to me, would be a good topic for the meeting this afternoon.
That's on my notes, but you said it much more, much better detail, so that, that'll come up today. Clerk Cullen, did you have something else?
I just agreed with what Matt was saying.
Okay, terrific. So I just want to be told, we don't want to be told we can't have a meeting. We, this is an important time, and so I want to follow through and see how we can help. And I think some good things are going to come out of it, and we're going to move forward. Ms. Madison, you sure you didn't have something? Thanks for being here. Okay. Director Lang, you okay?
Yeah, no, we'll do.
Welcome.
Thanks. And so you'll be bringing your summary of the steps you're taking for your limited services, et cetera. We're going to be putting out a, a press release telling the public what each department's doing to still give services during these times on a limited basis.
But Council Huddle, that'll be after this afternoon's meeting.
Yeah, but, but what we'll need is each department head to bring that to the meeting, so we can assimilate it into a, one document.
Okay. Director Madison? Yes, go ahead, Commissioner Pash.
I just, it's 10 after 10 now. I have a 10:30 doctor's appointment. I'm just wondering if there's anything more for me.
No, but thank you. We're, we're going to adjourn very, very shortly here. I think probably after-
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
You too.
You're welcome.
So every day this week, we have been releasing to our businesses, our chambers, our city administrators, the commissioners and regional partners, industry, small business, and economic impact updates related to the current situation. It is on the website. It's also on the curryoem.com. So if you wanted me to send you that link, Matt, so you can see what we're producing, or I can put you on the distribution list. Okay, and then also, as far as the management meeting goes, if we're going to be put in a position where we're sharing documents or screenshots, I sent you the link so that we could have video available. And it's actually something we've paid for for the next year, so everybody's able to use that if we need to. What was the other thing you wanted me to address?
Is that Zoom, Summer, or what is-
No, it's go-to-meeting.
Go-to-meeting, okay.
And it has video.
I've had two people suggest Zoom as well. I don't know that program, the, anyway.
I just have one question, Summer. As you're reaching out to these businesses, I know that ex-commissioner George Rhodes talked about yesterday, businesses not being able to get to the SBA website to fill out forms to get relief. Are we making that available to the businesses so they can get through that process easily?
Yeah, so the initial worksheets-
I can speak to, you have been Johnny on the spot on that, like, immediately.
The worksheets that we needed to have submitted to make our case, the, that threshold's been met, and so now we're in a position of waiting for the emergency declaration to be submitted and accepted by the state. And then you will see in turn the links for eligibility for our local businesses to apply. So if you go onto the SBA site now, you're not going to see that link. It should probably be listed sometime today. And I've got to say, despite not being as prepared as we would hope to be for the circumstances, overall, I really appreciate everybody stepping up or working together. I know emotions are high, but this is where we all need to- are high, but, um, this is where we all need to, um, you know, be a little more proactive, less reactive, and also, uh, just real quick, I did recommend that Commissioner Boyce reach out to AOC and see what the collaborative, uh, counties are doing for implementing, um, shutdown services and, uh, limited availability, uh, physically, I think the more that we can communicate that to the public, the better off we are.
Well said.
Okay, that's it.
Emergency Management Coordinator Dumire, do you have something?
So again, Jeremy Dumire, emergency manager for the county, uh, just heard Summer speak about the SBA, wanted to inform you that while Oregon yet does not have the SBA in place, Curry County is eligible thanks to California and being directly adjoining. That information has been added to the Facebook page and is being uploaded to the OEM, Curry OEM website right now. So we are eligible for SBA as of now, thanks to California.
One question? One question, is that just because of Del Norte?
Correct.
So would Jackson County, Siskiyou County as well?
I do not know, uh, in terms of Siskiyou County, I don't know if that affects Jackson, Josephine County or not, I just know from an email I just received from Joseph Murray that we are eligible thanks to California.
But we want to follow through with our own program as well, I, I assume.
We are eligible for funding, and at that point, I'm happy.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Anything else? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all, very much.